Yeah, one thing that a lot of people get wrong with light side now is you really don't want to get into that.
Is this correct? That you're mentioning going to the plant.
Okay.
I'm like Googling this. Oh, is that one?
And the, and the, um, for your whole, um, that, that comes alright. But, but I know what you mean. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yep, I know. All right. We're gonna go ahead and call the work session of the Bloomington City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Milliwanway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Howman.
Here.
Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. In terms of public comment, we have someone, Alicia Henry. Uh, would, Alicia, would you come forward, please?
Hi, I'm here tonight to make a comment about the, um, uh, notice I saw about the consideration in to include engineering work for an underpass at the bridges that need to be repaired or replaced. And I just wanted to support that and encourage you to consider putting in the extra money that's needed or putting it into, um, at least the engineering work so that in the future, if things look well and the city can afford to do something like that, that it would be something that wouldn't have to be torn up. And I think that the idea of connecting, um, different parts of the trail, um, to other segments of it is something that's been on the, in the plan for many, many years. I moved here, um, with preschoolers, uh, twenty-five years ago, and on my first walk around White Oak Lake, I was thrilled to see that it would someday be connected to the rest of the trail. And twenty-five years later, it still is not, and it's rather difficult to go from this part of the, um, uh, city to the others that are less comfortable road access. And so I think that it's a good idea to try to incorporate that into your planning right now. I know things are rough right now, but in the future, it's unlikely to stay that way. And so if there's any way that you could, um, consider using the, um, you know, or at least putting the planning in for engineering, um, that would be a really good thing to do. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much. And we go right to our, our first item, expansion, uh, of request for quote, an RFQ scope of work for repairs to the Linden Street Bridge, Jersey Avenue Bridge, and Cottage Avenue. And the bridge should include an underpass preparation for future Constitution Trail expansion. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn that over to, uh, Mr. Rasmussen and Mr. Karch.
Yes, thank you very much. And, uh, Mayor, we're going to ask the Assistant Superintendent of Parks, Mr. David Lamb, to give you a quick presentation on these two things. Uh, several members of the, uh, council has already viewed this, uh, out at White Oak Park, and so this will be reviewed for them and, uh, new for the rest of you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, thank you for having me here tonight. I've just got a brief, uh, presentation, short one, about, uh, the Linden Street Bridge and the Constitution Trail in general. Um, this came to our attention through cooperative work between the Parks Department, Engineering, Public Works, that this Linden Street Bridge is in need of repair. So we looked back and looked at how, how does this fit into the overall scheme of things within Bloomington Normal and the Constitution Trail? There's two plans that currently call for trail connection and east-west trail connection through Bloomington. The Bloomington Parks Master Plan, uh, adopted by the council in January of 2010, identifies this as a high priority, and the McLean County Greenways Plan identifies this as a preserving green space throughout the community. So give me just a second here to forward these slides, if you would, okay? Uh, this is the area that we're talking about. Uh, the Linden Street Bridge is in the middle. This is, the blue is the current Constitution Trail, and just to the right of that is Linden Street. The red is the proposed Constitution Trail, which runs right alongside of Sugar Creek, just to the north side of Sugar Creek. There's three bridges that are in question here, and they're all very unique together in the fact that they all need to be replaced at some point in the future, and they all have potential trail to run underneath them. So the thinking is that why go in ten, fifteen years later, whatever your timeframe is, tear down a newly constructed bridge when you can make the accommodations for the trail underpass at this time? This is a close-up of the area there. That's Linden Street, Constitution Trail to the west, potential trail in red, uh, to the north of the bridge, um, bridge there. As you do notice, if this was not to be an underground crossing and it was to be above-ground crossing, it would be a mid-block, which those are much more difficult to do and less safe as there's not an intersection there or a light. So if we were to provide this crossing without the underpass, it would be a more hazardous crossing than a crossing with an underpass, and it would definitely slow down the flow. This is, uh, the view right now of the Linden Street Bridge, looking west. Obviously, it's in need of repair, as you know. It's down to one lane right now on both sides. So I believe Public Works is planning on repairing this bridge either way, whether or not we, uh, do the underpass or not. That's looking west down Sugar Creek. That part of Sugar Creek is concrete bottom. There's plenty of parts of Sugar Creek that are, uh, wet bottom. This is Grove Street Underpass or Washington Street Underpass. This is just one of our other trail underpasses. This is what I would assume that this would look like after it's constructed, something similar to this. We currently have two underpasses in Bloomington, uh, under, one underneath Washington Street here, one right next to Sugar Creek, uh, along GE Road. Again, this is another view of the area, looking east, I believe, upstream. As you can see, the ground is relatively level. This is kinda already set up for a trail to be put in. Uh, it's already being maintained by, uh, a public entity, by Binward. This is another view. It's a nice, uh, nice wooded area, you know? Putting in a trail would not be that difficult from an engineering standpoint. Uh, the ground's relatively, uh, slopes relatively minor. This is the, uh, north-south trail bridge right now that's on the trail going over Sugar Creek. Uh, that would just be a view you would have there of the bridge from the underpass. This is kind of a bonus here that came up as we were looking at this. This is Briarwood subdivision right on the north edge of Bloomington, and, uh, if we did just this one underpass, um, and we could easily hook the Briarwood subdivision through land we already own, uh, majority we already own, with some sidewalk onto a small trail, and then right up to, uh, Constitution Trail there. So this kinda came, presented itself to us through working with Public Works is, this is just a additional benefit of this to getting people from Briarwood onto the Constitution Trail. So this is an immediate need to repair this bridge, but it requires long-term vision and planning from the council and from staff. As I mentioned, the Linden Street Bridge is in the worst condition of the three, but all three need to be repaired, and I believe there's a schedule in your memo for that, projected schedule. This trail right here, this Sugar Creek Branches, we'll call it, will connect White Oak and Ewing Parks together through the trail, and it'll ultimately, through that, it would provide contiguous trail from White Oak Park all the way out to Tipton Park and then out to Tuanda Barnes Road. So this would provide a very, very serious east-west link through Bloomington. Support of this branch of the trail is obvious, as we have somebody here tonight. Thank you very much. And, uh, it's also, as I mentioned, identified in both the Parks Master Plan and McLean County's Greenways Plan. We've also had support for this from the Friends of the Constitution Trail and Bike Blono. Historically, one of the major roadblocks in obtaining trail and creating trail is land acquisition. So all throughout the state of Illinois, it's been very difficult to acquire some of these rail lines, some of this land to put our trail through. This land here that we're talking about is already in public ownership through Binward. Uh, so that would be a cooperative agreement we would have to work out with them. We're not purchasing any land here. We're not having to go through any contracts with rail companies or anything like that to get this land, so that's another bonus. In summary, I just wanted to add that the trail is a very popular asset to our community. It provides both recreation and sustainable multimodal transportation through Bloomington Normal. We feel that it makes sound planning sense to accommodate this trail wherever possible in our planning efforts. So with that, I'll open it up for, uh, questions.
Questions, comments? Oh, yes, uh, Mr. Rasmussen, would start?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. If I could help focus, uh, the council a little bit on this, uh, what we're asking here is not for a decision on which way to build it now, that will come later. We're really asking for some guidance on which way we should begin to design it. Uh, repair the bridge might be, uh, four or five hundred thousand dollars, depending on how it comes out. If we, uh, do it with the underpass for the trail, it might be seven or eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. It's considerably more, but then you would not have to go back and build it later. Uh, so we're not asking the council to decide now which one to build. That decision can come later, but we have to have the engineers to go to work now, and there is considerable cost, uh, that is, uh, incurred by doing the design work. We'd like to know whether we should tell the engineers to design for a bridge repair or for a bridge repair with an overpass, and that's really the information we would like to seek guidance from on the council tonight.
Okay. And we're gonna go ahead and start with Alderman Fruin and, um, others who wanna weigh in. Go ahead.
Uh, thanks, David. I, I came tonight with a perception, as I thought about our underpass connections. Uh, I, I guess I remember back when we built the Bear Nuts or the Washington Street, there was a lot of controversy about that and security and things like that, and it's turned out that that hasn't been the case. It's lit, but that's, that's kind of enclosed. But what I was envisioning when I came tonight is something similar to what you mentioned at, there's two there, actually two. There's one under Hershey, and there's one under, uh, Veterans.
Under Veterans. That one's in Normal, technically, the one under Veterans, but yeah.
And to me, those are not enclosed, but they're open. They're right alongside the, the, uh, water.
Correct.
And I think, to me, that sends a, a more open or a, uh, safer environment. So I know we're not here to build it tonight, but I just, if that's the concept that you'd be talking about.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be more supportive of that as opposed to something that might be, uh, re- reignite this security issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. I think, uh, we have, we don't have any security concerns with either of these underpasses since any of them put in. We've never had any additional problems with security. Uh, they don't seem to get any more vandalism than anything else, so, and I do believe that this one would be more similar to the one on GE Road. This one here on Grove Street was newer, looks a little nicer, so I use that one as my photo, but, uh...
Alderman Black and then Schmidt.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Uh, I'll be very brief in that, uh, I'm very supportive of, of including, uh, the trail design into the, uh, into the engineering, uh, namely because we, we talk so much about how things cost us a lot of money, but the cost in this case of doing nothing is significantly higher. And, uh, in my conversations across the ward and throughout the city, the Constitution Trail is, uh, is an asset. People love it there, they're constantly out there. I appreciate how you had a rollerblader in the, uh, opening slide.
Could you?
It was not me, and it, it's funny, because I swear it's just me and a bunch of eight-year-old girls that are the ones that are rollerblading out there on the trail, so...
Too much information.
There you go, right? Um, so, you know, the multi-use is, is important, um, but I, I also will just, just state that, uh, you know, as we talk about this, this plan along with the bike plan later this evening is that, uh, many people use the Constitution Trail as their main means for getting around the community safely.
Correct.
Because they don't have a vehicle or they can't take the bus or for whatever reason, and I think it's incumbent upon us to consider those folks as well. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Schmidt?
Um, I too am very interested in having this happen, and I think it's a lot less, I'm, I'm guessing it's a lot less expensive to think about doing it upfront and not retrofitting it afterwards. Um, could you talk, someone, talk a little bit about the funding for this? You know, what, what line is it in? Um, and I'm assuming that the difference in cost between adding it and not adding it, um, is upfront cost, and then there's cost that comes along afterwards to actually finalize it. Is that, am I looking at that right?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I, I think I'd ask, uh, Jim Karch to address that, the funding issue for it.
Alderman Schmidt, this is with motor fuel tax funds, and this would be initially, uh, under the design, so you'd go through the RFQ process, which would not preclude us from getting additional funding. Whenever you go through the RFQ process, that quality-based selection, should another funding source be available, it leaves us open for that. But yes, so the design and the construction, you know, if we do it to motor fuels tax standards, it allows us to be eligible for any other type of funding that becomes available.
So, I'm, I'm sorry to belabor this. So in the packet, it said six hundred thousand without it, three and nine hundred thousand with it. That is design and build?
That's correct.
Okay, so at this juncture, we're talking about designing both and building one?
Uh, that is a good clarification. No, actually, what, what I would be asking for is to be able to design one based upon the feedback from the council tonight. Thank you for the clarification. I would be asking, uh, for some clarity of direction, so that when we go through the RFQ process, we design for one, and then we would still bring that back to the council for final approval, but we would move forward with the contract accordingly.
Alderman Sage?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to follow up a little bit on what Karen said, the, the, the approximate fifty percent increase between the, the, the two designs, uh, what's, what's the actual dollar difference right now, just simply at the design point that we're at, where we would, that, that we're talking about the additional cost that, to, to design with the, you know, with the Constitution Trail underpass? I mean, it, it can't be a whole lot of money, I can't, I don't think.
Correct. It's always difficult to give an approximation, but if I were, I'd, I'd put it at the ten percent mark.
Okay.
Uh, whenever you go by that, so that would be, instead of three hundred thousand for the difference of construction, ten percent of that would be thirty thousand dollars for the difference of design. So that's a, a ballpark range to give you.
Right. So, so again, that's kinda put some dollars and cents on what we're asked to do right now. Jim, the fact that we're putting, um, what would propose to place a Constitution Trail underneath is, does that call into play or put into play, and I know this is far off in the future, but, but right now, conceptually, does it open up the door for any other grants? The fact that we're adding the, you know, the, the multimodal aspect to, to this design?
That is the hope, uh, Alderman Sage, that is the hope, is that when the city makes investments, you know, that does allow us to be eligible for other grants for all of that, you know, 'cause you do, there are a slant other grants that do become available occasionally, and so by the city positioning themselves for that long-term benefit, it does, uh, allow us to, to apply and, and seem like we really do care about this, you know, twenty-eight mile amenity in our community that people love.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
And just to, um, before we get to Alderman Lauer, just to, to follow up on that a little bit, when, um, we were in the One Voice Trip, uh, let's see, uh, David Hales, myself, Jim, I thi, were you in the transportation or were you on the mental, you were, you were with us, we were in the, you know, talking to people, basically the people who are gonna vet the Tiger Grants? One of the critical things they told us is when we're applying, we're probably gonna apply for two in our community, one is kind of the multi-modal, you know, connect transit right over here in front of Law and Justice Center, uh, to show that we're integrating into the future of transportation. So we're not just talking about bus, bus plus rail, bus plus auto, bus plus bike trails, and that we're serving a variety of impacted neighborhoods, older neighborhoods, et cetera. All of those things raise your ranking. So it's not implausible that things like this could be used to help us leverage other types of grants as well.
Well, and, and, and thanks for clarifying that, 'cause I, I think that's a point I was trying to make, even though we're talking about potentially three hundred thousand, that, that may not be the net amount that the city might be accountable for if the fact that we're putting the Constitution Trail underneath opens up the potential for some other grants to offset the three hundred thousand dollar extra that we're talking about.
True.
Alderman Lauer?
Well, I hate to be the guy that always rain on the parade here, but I'm gonna have to. Um, to put things in perspective, we've got a lot of engineering issues that we need to be addressing, and, um, at the very top of the list, I would certainly think, would be some of the things I've talked to our engineering department about, um, just offhandedly. Um, we have some intersections, um, along major thoroughfares, right around some of our grade schools that don't allow for proper turning radius, uh, for our school buses. Um, we've got a number of issues, uh, where we don't even really know where the property lies, uh, property lines lie, and we need to get those things underway first. So I, I think we've got a lot of things that really need to be at the top of the list, and this would come way down the list. This is not an absolute need. Those things are. Those things do provide safety. This would provide some safety, but it's recreational for the most part. Um, a very, very small number of our citizens are actually using this to get back and forth to work, um, as a need. And, uh, I'm not sure that this particular, uh, section would suit anybody's absolute need, um, in that neighborhood. I would expect that nearly everyone is probably, uh, driving to work back and forth. So, um, again, a little bit of perspective, um, some priorities, and, uh, I would think that the grade schools and the, and the school buses would be, uh, very, very near the top of the list and, and addressing those first. Thanks.
Alderman Lauer, I, you know, I'm the infrastructure guy. I get to be the, many times, the, the doomsayer about the needs of the infrastructure, so I, I very much understand the point. Um, what I'll convey to the council as a whole is that, um, we always look for opportunities, and whenever, you know, you, with a bridge replacement, that's different than a road. Um, a bridge only comes around every fifty-plus, seventy-five years, sometimes a hundred years. And so when those kind of opportunities come up, we wanna make sure that we capitalize on long-term planning, not just for our generation, but future generations.
Alder, Alderman Schmidt, and then, uh, Howman and Burgess.
I just wanna clarify for all of us, it's my understanding that the bridge replacement is imminent. We have to do this.
I don't know if you could see that from the picture that, uh, Mr. Lamb put up there, but there's a piece of rebar dangling.
Right.
From the bottom of the bridge, folks.
This is it.
Whenever we've, we've gotten calls about the bear, the, the barrels that are up, that are blocking, oh, I, what, what are these barrels up here for? Yeah, these, these have been up here for, yes, they have been up there way too long. That's because the bridge deck, we're, we're steering traffic off that center lane from, from a loading standpoint, uh, you know, the structural analysis says we, it's best to, to just keep the cars off that area, and so, yes, this bridge, very, this bridge deck very much needs to be replaced.
Uh, Alderman Howman and then Burgess.
Um, Jim, just a question in our handout, uh, it says Linden Street Bridge, uh, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Um, I'm...
My apologies, that shouldn't be if, uh, that was said that.
Yeah, that's, I, so I'm wondering...
Actually, should say, yeah, it's, it's already done, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I, I just thought maybe I'd had, you know, like deja vu or something, and, and, but it, it, so I guess my, my question was, if it was in last year's, but, if it was already in last year's budget, why...
This was discussed in design, actually, for last year's budget. When the issue came along, we actually did discuss this to bring before you during the last fiscal year. We're now just in the very beginning of this next fiscal year. Uh, the issue came up, then we said, well, we don't, we, uh, Mr. Lamb could probably talk about this, but there was a lot of public involvement, too, that's important for you to know. Uh, we reached out to a lot of the community, the, the community component right there on the north side of Sugar Creek, had some involvement and engagement with those citizens to try to say, well, how important is this to you? Do you have any concerns with this trail? So there was also extensive invol, so that took a little bit longer and pushed us into this fiscal year, FY sixteen, with, uh, hopeful construction, depending upon the design and any other issues in the next fiscal year.
So, so that we, we, we didn't have any money in the two thousand and fifteen budget?
We did. Um, the, one thing with motor fuel tax is motor fuel tax is a little bit different than, than many, many of the other general fund, um, that, that our council is used to working with. Motor fuel tax is almost like a, a bank with, that sits there of, of funds that's a little bit different than our normal. We get the funds from the state, and that sits in the bank. Many times, we, we build that up over years to pay for very expensive, uh, multi, you know, multi-million dollar projects, for example, the, you know, the Fox Creek Bridge that's coming up, that, that replacement. You know, it takes years to be able to build that up. We don't get enough money in a single year to pay for some of those. So it allows us some flexibility to, to move across multiple fiscal years.
So there would've been carryover then from, potentially?
Uh, in, yes, it was, it just stays in that fund until it's spent, so that's actually not a problem fiscally.
Thanks for educating me.
Sure. Um, Alderman, uh, Burgess?
Um, I just wanna make sure I understand what our options are. Uh, so, uh, obviously, as we've heard, a replacement of this bridge is imminent. It is a necessary thing. It's, uh, a considerable risk at this point in time. So our options, if we do not, um, cho, choose the underpass right now, my understanding is, um, one, in the future, that could mean an overpass, which would mean routing Constitution Trail traffic over the street, uh, which would interrupt the flow of traffic on a street that is fairly heavily traveled, um, and, uh, also would create a potential safety hazard for those individuals crossing the street. Um, and, well, yeah, go ahead and address that if...
If I could, I'll clarify. Um, it, 'cause you're very close, so what there, you're correct, though, the options are this, right now, from the design standpoint, if you don't, if the council says, hey, we don't wanna build this with a wider span of the bridge to accommodate a Constitution Trail underneath. So twenty years from now, we say, well, boy, we're gonna, we've got the grant funding, we're ready to move forward, we wanna increase this amenity. Then you still have the choice of over at grade or under, but under's probably not gonna be feasible at that point. It, it's from a cost standpoint. Overpass still is, uh, feasible, it wouldn't interrupt traffic, it would be, uh, you know, it would be, uh, grade separated, so, you know, similar to Oakland Avenue, uh, just east of Clinton, uh, in that area, there, there's a, it, so that, that allows people to cross safely. Again, that's a cost standpoint, uh, later after the fact, or you could do an at-grade, that there are others in the community that are an at-grade crossing. So that is something that's potential then, but again, it's not, um, it's not as safe, it's not the best, uh, case scenario, whenever you have the opportunity to allow people a grade separated.
If I can just follow up, i, is that, this option here today, um, am I correct that that is the most economically feasible, looking at all those different options, as well as the safest option?
Yes, it, it is. Given the time, the ability for us with the grades and what they are, just as, uh, Mr. Lamb showed you, kind of coming up to that, this is the opportunity for that, just spreading that out a little bit from a cost standpoint, to get people at, for a grade separated.
Mid-block, mid-block crossings, too, are a little different situation than, just, you know, as you mentioned. Mid-block crossings are a little different situation, too, as there's no inherent streetlights, traffic's only stopping for the trail. So that makes it inherently less safe as well. This is, all three of these are mid-block crossings.
Um, Alderman Painter, Milliwanway, you didn't? Okay, so, uh, Painter and, uh, Lauer and Fruin.
Thank you. Um, well, I agree with Alderman Lauer that we do have some pressing needs that we have to deal with right now, but the future is still going to get here, and I think that it behooves us to plan for the future right. And if having an underpass will position us to get more grant money and be safer for pedestrians and bicycle riders in the future, um, I'm for going the extra mile right now and doing things right. Thanks.
Uh, Alderman Lauer?
I hate to keep, keep coming back to this, but we've got a fire station, it's not in the country, that was supposed to make us safer, too. And, uh, you know, that at-grade or below grade or above grade or whatever grade you want is making a massive assumption that we're gonna have the money to expand the trail in the first place. Uh, I'm not ready to make that assumption yet. Uh, we've got an awful lot on our plate, we've got a lot of plans to make, and, uh, we ought to be setting parties and making those plans for the things we absolutely do need now. Thanks.
Um, okay, Alderman, well, I'm gonna turn to Alderman Milliwanway, just because he hasn't gone first, and then, uh, so, he's gone yet.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll try to keep, to, to say, have, uh, every Alderman speak before someone gets a second.
I know, and Alderman...
Alderman Lauer has already.
It's a hard time.
But I promise, Jim, we'll get...
Just a very simple question, Jim. So what's the timeline for the bridge? You know, is it something, so it's gonna be done during the summer, FY seventeen? How long does it take about?
Actually, bridges can take quite a while, so what we would anticipate is the design for us to go out for an RFQ, finish that, uh, during these summer months, get that under design so that construction can begin during next year's construction season. Uh, depending upon when it begins, you, we would hope that it, the, the work would be done during the construction season. A lot of that depends upon when it gets started, when winter hits. Um, that always is part of the issue, but, but yes, we would hope to have that done, the substantial completion by the following year. And that would include, uh, most likely, a, a bridge shut, you know, a complete shutdown of that road for a little bit, but they probably would look at alternates to keep roads, so we'd look at both. We'd look at complete shutdown versus doing half of the span, uh, half of it at a time.
Alderman Lauer?
I hate to keep coming back to this, but we've got a fire station, not in the country, that was supposed to make us safer, too. And, you know, that at grade or below grade or above grade or whatever grade you want is making a massive assumption that we're going to have the money to expand the trail in the first place. I'm not ready to make that assumption yet. We've got an awful lot on our plate. We've got a lot of plans to make. And we ought to be setting parties and making those plans for the things we absolutely do need now. Thanks.
Okay, Alderman, well, I'm going to turn to Alderman Milowamba, just because he hasn't gone first, and then, gone yet.
Sorry.
I'll try to keep, to have every Alderman speak before someone gets a second.
I know.
Alderman Lauer has already.
(laughing)
But I promise, Jim.
Just a very simple question, Jim. So what's the timeline for the bridge? You know, is it something, so it's going to be done during the summer, FY17? How long does it take about?
Actually, bridges can take quite a while. So what we would anticipate is the design, for us to go out for an RFQ, finish that during these summer months, get that under design so that construction can begin during next year's construction season. Depending upon when it begins, we would hope that the work would be done during the construction season. A lot of that depends upon when it gets started, when winter hits. That always is part of the issue. But, but yes, we would hope to have that done, the substantial completion by the following year. And that would include, most likely, a bridge shut, you know, a complete shutdown of that road for a little bit. But they probably would look at alternates to keep roads. So we'd look at both. We'd look at complete shutdown versus doing half of the span, half of it at a time.
And then Alderman Frueen, thank you.
Thank you. Jim, I'm supportive of this. I think primarily because of the long extension and not so much the connection, because right now, I don't consider it a safety issue, because if you're coming out of Briarwood, all you're doing is coming down to the four-way stop, crossing at the Linden Street stop there. And we've already got the path off Emerson to the trail. So we've already got access for Briarwood if they come to the intersection. So that's one of the things I wrestled with. We've got pretty good access for Briarwood people now, but I guess I'm looking at the longer stretch. Thank you.
If I can add to this for the council, whenever we look at Greenways, this is important for you to know, that just an overall philosophy, when you see overall, Sugar Creek's a major conveyance. It carries a lot of water, it goes underneath major roads. Those are the opportunities that you think about getting from point A to point B quickly. It's not only beautiful, it also water, many times in this case, can take a very quick path that cuts in differently than streets. And so it's, it's a very, that's why it's popular. That's why people like to use it.
Okay. We've essentially used almost exactly our time. At this point, is there a motion to provide conceptual support of expanding the RFQ scope of work for engineering services? Excuse me, I'm going to start the vote here. So if you vote, first of all, I need a motion.
I was going to say
Is there a motion to provide
I will make that motion there.
To provide conceptual support of expanding the RFQ scope of work for engineering services to include engineering for future Constitution Trail underpasses at Linden Street, Jersey Avenue Cottage Avenue, bridges over Sugar Creek. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Okay. If everyone will please vote. Was it?
(inaudible).
Okay.
Behind us.
Oh, it is over there. Okay. Well, I can point to one place where this is working. The motion passes eight to one. Madam Clerk, would you announce the nay?
Alderman Lauer.
Okay. Okay. Now we move right along to the next item, Hershey Road, Arrowhead and Clearwater Avenue, excuse me, Hershey Road, Arrowhead Drive and Clearwater Avenue, on-street parking elimination. And the request is that the city council vote to provide conceptual support of the parking elimination. But we're going to start with a presentation by Mr. Karch. Steve, did you want to add anything?
Yes, thank you very much. The staff has been working on this for a long time because of the trafficability on Hershey Road. And we're ready to move forward, but we do need some guidance about the parking and the attendant cost of that. And Jim has got the details on that.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Rasmussen. Mayor and City Council, this is a project that we have been working on. We do know that there is a need for two traffic signals that have been in the budget. We've been working toward that. We've come to the point where we need to bring an issue before you for consideration. And so we do have two signals along Hershey Road, both Clearwater and Arrowhead. And we've been underdesigned for those. So with this, what we've got is we are looking to add additional left-turn lanes. We're looking to add signals and turn lanes and some distant expansion at the intersection. What this is going to do is this is going to impact people, the motoring public that goes through this, this intersection, but then also the people who live along here. Let me start off by saying that Hershey Road, when this was originally designed, it really shouldn't have been done the way it was done. It's important for you to know that. This is an arterial road. Hershey Road carries 16,000 cars a day. And there was a choice a long time ago when this was built to put residential homes all the way along with direct access onto an arterial road. That is not good design. If we were to bring that to you today, it's not recommended to be done that way. And this is the reason why. Because from an access standpoint, it's difficult for residents who live along there, it's difficult for them with parking, it's difficult for municipalities to properly get people through there. Currently, we have a situation on Hershey Road to where throughout the week, people, you have two lanes in each direction. This is great. You're traveling down southbound, you're traveling from GE, and there's no issues. Then all of a sudden, on the weekend, oh, now there's people parking, and, you know, you're taking evasive action, it feels like at times. We've heard complaints over many decades of this being an issue. Well, we have, again, the more traffic you have, the more issues there is going to be. And so what we're seeing is traffic isn't going to start slowing down on Hershey Road. Some roads, like Regency, for example, have actually lessened their traffic over the years. Regency and Fairway have gotten less vehicles per day, not Hershey Road. Hershey Road is going to continue to grow. And because of that, we need to make sure we not only take into account the current conditions, but what are those future conditions going to be? One of them is dealing with parking. So it's important for you to know, right now, you know, we talk about traffic signals or even stop signs all the time. And, you know, we want to, maybe we want them in lots of different places, or we want them all over, you know, all over the place, because we think sometimes they help traffic or make things safer. Not always. Just a quick education point, whenever you put up a traffic signal or a stop sign, they have to meet warrants. So there's traffic signal warrants, traffic sign warrants. In this case, along Hershey, for these two signals, at both intersections, warrant three of this manual of uniform traffic control devices, a federal regulation, says they're already warranted. They already are needed right now, not just whenever the traffic gets up to 24,000 vehicles a day. They're warranted now. And it's on a delay basis. That's on that side street, how long it takes for people to get through there. So let's talk about other reasons. Because of some of the accidents that happened, some turn, some angle accidents, you know, these are some other justifications for us looking at this. Stevenson School is right there. We've had many concerns over the, over the years about the kiddos getting to school safely, crossing over at Arrowhead. And so we have to look, and this allows us for some increased safety at that intersection as well. So let's talk, though, about parking, specifically here before we tonight, to talk about parking along this. Whenever we look at expanding that road and adding that left-turn lane, the people along Clearwater, which is on the right side, Arrowhead on the left, they're going to be directly impacted by removal of parking on their street. Well, I've been involved, before I was a Public Works Director, I was a project engineer for the city, and I helped build Airport Road north of Empire. I helped work on Hamilton Road around Morris Avenue and to the west and to the east of there. So, you know, you'll notice if you drive along those, what do you see? You see some turnaround. You see these little, little turn-in and turn-out things that happen. Well, the reason for that is, again, those are arterial roads. We expand, we try to make sure we accommodate what's happening in this. So we offer, when we eliminate parking, people need to park somewhere. So we're allowing, we're trying to work with these folks to say, hey, we'll allow for a turnaround. And the, but now the issue comes along Hershey Road. What do we do with Hershey Road? It's ideal, if we can, to eliminate some of that weekend parking. And so we, we said, let's see, this came out of actually a public meeting. This is important for you to know. A citizen came up with this in a December 1st, 2014 meeting. They said, hey, if you give us a turnaround, we'd support getting rid of parking. So we said, well, let's, let's look at that. And so we actually sent out some, we actually sent out different surveys to folks to try to gauge their interest. I want to show you up there on the screen, kind of what these turnarounds would look like. This is important for you to see. There are two different options we're really looking at. And so one is, we call that more of that T-turnaround. And that's where, again, both of these are designed to be for a single car. They're not intended to be a huge parking lot in people's front yard. They're not intended to be a big detriment to the community. They're intended to be an amenity for the people there because we're impacting them. And so there's either a parallel or a T-parking. And so now that, we, now let's look at Hershey Road. So when we sent out the property surveys, actually, we were pleasantly surprised. 10 of the properties said, yes, remove the parking, the weekend parking and provide my property with a driveway turnaround. That was, that was a pleasant surprise. Four said, no, don't remove the weekend parking. And then three did not respond. We've tried to reach out to those additional three as well. But again, the vast majority do have been supportive of removal of that parking and allowing for these turnarounds. So we need to know where we're going with this. What we're looking at now is, it's important, because this has an impact on Stevenson School, that we do this over the summer. Now, we don't want to impact the school negatively during their school year. We always have tried to be respectful of that anytime we work around a school. So because of that, we're still working with the residents of this area. We anticipate the next construction season to build these signals. And, but I think it's important to get before the council now to gauge your support, because it's not unanimous. I mean, you won't have everybody out there that agrees with that. But we are pleasantly surprised that the majority of people, almost 60%, do agree with the removal of that. But we thought this was a good time to take this before the council. At this point, I'd like to ask if you have any questions.
Questions of Mr. Karch. Alderman Painter, especially since you're on board.
Right. Well, I want to thank you for all the work you've done on this, because you really have done a great deal. And as you know, there are some people that are very opposed to this, but most people are for it. And I think that we need to move ahead with this. I also want to give you a heads up. There are one or two people that would like to talk with you about this a little bit. So
Have they, have they reached out? Because I always talk, I always, my phone rings a lot. I'm fine, always going to call back.
Anyway, thank you. And I think that for everyone's safety, it's important that this moves forward. I have to say that in the beginning, I was a little skeptical about this. But then I asked for a report on all of the traffic accidents within a six-month period, and there were a lot. And I have several friends that live on Hershey, and I asked them about it. And one of my friends said, oh, yeah, I saw two accidents this weekend. And it was around Christmas time. But, you know, a lot of people have said, oh, well, you know, you're, you're only, this is only a problem when school lets out and when State Farm lets out. But it's not. It's a problem all the time. So, thank you very much.
It does get worse, though, during those peak times. We do agree with that.
Right.
It is important, too, to know that traffic signals don't take away every accident. You're correct. And, but what they do is they change the type of accident that they are. If you're seeing a lot of those right-angle and left-turn type of accidents from, then you'll have more rear-end accidents. That's, you know, typically what happens. So, but it does help the overall safety of the intersection.
And I might add, I know somebody that lives in the apartments on Hershey Road, and he is looking very forward to this because he can't get out of his driveway around 4:30. It really takes him a long time. So this should improve that. Thank you.
Alderman Frueen, excuse me.
Thank you. Just a supportive comment. I think I see this very similar to the front-yard turnarounds we have between Washington and Oakland on Hershey. We got, we have several down there, and there's even some south of Oakland Avenue. So those have worked out very well. And if we're willing to help those neighbors out by putting that concrete in their front yard, it should be helpful to them. So I'm very supportive based on what we have up and down Hershey already.
Anyone else? Well, is there a, is it a motion? That the city council vote to provide conceptual support of the parking elimination? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Hauman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Any further discussion? Let me start vote. There are eight votes, oh, excuse me, nine nays, yeah, nine ayes. No nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Okay. Okay. We, we're in work session. Did you want to make a comment? Yeah, sorry.
Mayor, I, I wonder if there's something that we could do to help accommodate a little bit of additional parking in the area. I don't, maybe working with the school in the area on the weekends. I'm just trying to have a little bit more or a little bit broader accommodation for the folks. I realize, and I have lived in apartment-type dwellings before, I've lived in high-density neighborhoods. And it is, at times, difficult, especially if you have family or company come in. Holiday season is a problem. Jim, is there anything that we can do to accommodate that a little further or to encourage that?
We actually did talk about that, Alderman Lauer. One of the difficulties that we have is proximity. From a parking perspective, people like to park right in, you know, they will like to park it right in front of wherever they're going. So it's difficult from a standpoint. We actually, you always look at how far does a person have to go to get, you know, to where they want to be at. So the only places to go would be off-side streets and in, you know, side areas. And people still do, it's important to know, people still do have the ability to park on all of the different side streets. That's not being modified. But again, most people won't, won't do that unless there's maybe a large event or something. So that's always a difficult challenge.
All right. Okay, at this point, then, we're a little ahead of schedule. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Hauman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have 32 home minutes till our next exciting episode. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely thrilling.